Thank you.
Well, thank you. I want to thank you.
We will call this meeting another Delta Township Board to order. This rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we be the justice for all.
Adam Kirk, please call it all.
Trustee Mojica?
Here.
Trustee Fentaro?
Trustee Brewer?
President?
Trustee Bowen?
Here.
Treasurer Pitoa?
We must.
Quick part of the gentleman's.
Here.
Thank you. A motion to excuse Treasurer Pitoa, Trustee Caspar.
So moved.
You would move this party? Party. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Motion carries. First up, we have a presentation from Capital Area Housing Partnership to update some children process.
Do you want me to stand up here?
Sure. I don't think that really too confusing for presentations.
Okay, so I do have a short PowerPoint. And if you were on this board last time we spoke, you've seen most of this already. We're just providing an update. So we, as you know, are doing the Delta Township Homeowner Rehab Program. This is funded through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. My name is Emma Henry, by the way. I'm the executive director of Capital Area Housing Partnership. Okay, so the program overview, like I mentioned, funded through MISTHA. These are CDBG dollars. Typically, these dollars are only in entitlement communities. So that would be Lansing and East Lansing. This is a rare occasion where MISTHA said, hey, we want to invest in other communities. Your staff, Erin here, was instrumental in getting this off the ground. And this allows us to do rehabilitation for homeowner occupied properties. Who is CAPS? So we're a nonprofit in the area. We're a housing, uh, oh, we lost our livestream. Oh, yeah. Okay. Um, so we've been around for about thirty years. Uh, we do development, we do housing education, financial resources, and homeowner rehab is another aspect of what we do. Why partner with us? So like I mentioned, over thirty years, twenty plus years of doing MISTHA, funded grants, other programs. We have a homeowner rehab program with Capital Area Community Services currently, Tri-County Office on Aging, the City of East Lansing, and we partner with the City of Lansing as well. So we have touchpoints all over Ingham County, and we're happy to partner with Delta to expand this resource to your community as well. Our role is to provide administrative services. So how do we get these funds actually into the community? Whether that is doing the application process, income verification of clients, um, actual contractor bidding process where we walk through the house, do an inspection, develop a scope of work, go out to bid with contractors. We have our own internal contractor pool. But if a client does have a contractor that they'd like to work with, they're welcome to have them apply to our program, go through our background check process and verification process, and then they can bid on the project as well. Uh, if you have worked with MISTHA funds or you're familiar with the State Housing Authority, it's government, so there's a lot of paperwork. Um, you're probably familiar with that around here, but we've been doing this for many years. The way MISTHA does things is a little different than, uh, other areas. And so we are experts in filling out that paperwork, making sure we're checking all the boxes and keeping the people at MISTHA happy. Okay, so our current status, and this will be opening up to questions if you have any other ideas coming up as well. We have done a Fox 47 interview. I was interviewed as well as Erin. Um, there was an article written about that as well on the Fox 47 website. After that went up, we had a ton of interest. When we initially sent out the newsletter information, uh, we got a big push of interest. And then once we did the interview, we got a lot more individuals that were calling us and turning in applications. We did receive forty-seven complete applications, hundreds of phone calls. The first time that we sent out that newsletter, excuse me, uh, we had people calling all day long. Our staff, we actually had two people answering the phone because it was ringing over and over and over. Um, some of the individuals didn't end up qualifying, but we were able to bring them into our homeowner counseling program that they could talk about other resources or, um, other grants that might be available in the area or other financial opportunities to fix that roof or, um, repair, you know, lead-based paint in their homes. This program is first come, first served. And so with the grant that Delta Township was awarded, we're able to serve about twelve to fifteen clients. Um, currently, we are in the income verification process. And so anyone that applies, we verify they turned in all the documents. The first come, we work through that income verification, and then we work down our list, develop scopes of work, find our numbers, and then determine how many clients we can serve. So it's, it's going to range as we get closer to the end. In a couple of months, we'll know exactly how many clients we're able to serve. Um, another part with federal dollars is the State Historic Preservation Office. And so each household that applies has to be approved by SHIBO. And so that means that it's not in a designated historic area. We're not negatively impacting the neighborhood visually. And so SHIBO is a state organization, and they have, you're coming in from all over the state. Um, those have all actually been submitted for Delta. When we talked to SHIBO last week, they said they hadn't really seen too many yet, which is great news because they're not backed up yet. And so we're ahead of the curve. This is a program that is being implemented all across the state of Michigan, and there's one State Historic Preservation Office that processes all of these applicants. And so very happy to report that we have all of the, um, first fifteen submitted, and we're waiting for, uh, feedback there. We don't expect to hear anything that there are designated historic areas in the zones that you selected. And so this is kind of just a checkbox that we have to do for MISTHA. Um, we are scheduling inspection walkthroughs. So that would be our staff going out on site, walking through the house, looking for the items that the resident has asked to be completed, as well as things that we are required to complete. So we do health, safety. That includes lead-based paint, asbestos abatement, and then code violations, major mechanical systems, roofing, um, things like that. So once that scope is determined, we do the lead and asbestos testing, which helps us get our final scope, and then we go out to bid. So there's still a couple of steps in the process here. We can do a maximum of forty thousand dollar investment in each property, uh, which sounds like a lot, but you'll know if you've done any repairs recently on your home, you can spend forty thousand dollars pretty quickly. A roof alone is ten to fifteen thousand dollars easily.
Is it testing done before it's determined that they've been accepted into the program?
No.
So after?
Yeah, and so what could happen is, uh, we've seen this in other rehab programs. If we find lead or asbestos, we have to remediate that. That's number one on our list. And so if there's a significant amount of lead-based paint and the person doesn't want to remediate it, they might drop out of the program. Um, you'd think, oh, it's easy, let's do it. But sometimes you'll find lead-based paint, for example, like on a garage window, but the person needs a furnace and a roof. The garage window isn't their personal top priority. But when you're using federal funds like this, we're trying to make sure it's a safe, healthy home for years to come and generations to come. And so we always have to start with those hazards. Um, and so there is that risk that we may lose a couple applicants from that process. Um, but we do have forty-seven, so I don't think we'll run out of interested applicants in this program.
So that comes off of their forty max?
Yeah. And testing is about three hundred to one hundred dollars for each house. And so, um, we, if the house is built after nineteen seventy-eight, we do not have to test for lead-based paint. And so it really depends on the individual circumstance, um, how many dollars will come off with testing costs. Okay, any other questions there? We are happy to come back at any time for additional updates. We're kind of in the middle ground here. We haven't really started anything quite yet physical. I know people like to see the, the changes, like this is the before and after. Um, so we're not at that point. We will be there soon. Uh, it does take a little while. We have to get multiple quotes from every contractor, and then we take the lowest bidder. Um, as a reminder, this program, if you use less than ten thousand dollars, it's a grant to the homeowner. If we use ten thousand and one to forty thousand, there's a lien put on the house for five years, zero interest, zero payments. It's forgiven if they stay in the home. So this is also supposed to spur staying in the community for a longer time period. Um, it kind of sits as a second mortgage. And so if they do sell the house within that five-year timeframe, then it's paid back at closing to MISTHA. Okay, that's great. Great, yeah, all good things, right? Yes, we're very excited that this opportunity, like I mentioned in the beginning, this opportunity was presented for communities that don't traditionally receive entitlement dollars because as an organization based in Lansing, we get a lot of phone calls from the entire area, the whole tri-county region. And it's hard to say no, you know? You know, you could say, oh, get a home equity line of credit, oh, try your bank. But that's not a resource that everyone has available to them. And so to have funds like this and to show, hey, we got forty-seven people that filled out all the documents, sent all of their information in and want this program, it allows us to go back to the State Housing Authority and say, hey, you should do this every year. We want to do this again, and Delta wants to do it.
Thank you so much for, for providing those resources for people who didn't necessarily qualify for this, but giving them education and resources, that's great. I hope that's good for your organization as well and, you know, your saturation.
Yeah.
Are you finding that more of the residents are seniors or, you know, sort of the age brackets for some of the?
Um, so I haven't dug into that completely. We're happy to get that information for you. Um, I would say, I feel like it's kind of arranged just based on the individuals that stopped by our office. Uh, some came in with young kids, some came in on the bus. So, you know, we've seen all different levels of individuals, yeah.
Graphics would be nice.
Okay, definitely. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, great, well, thanks, appreciate the update.
Thanks so much.
We have the agendas before us. Any additions or deletions? A motion to approve.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Any support? There is support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. The motion carries. Uh, public comment? Anybody here this evening would like to speak on any topic? Now is your opportunity to speak. Would you like to speak this evening during public comment?
I have one.
Sure. Right. Send your name and address for the record.
Sure. Lyle Letterbury, five thirty-three Steele. Three minutes, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll bring that. Around July twenty-first on Steele Avenue. The lady, a lady like two houses remaining called and said that there was a, a guy got mad at her because she, her place is a little ratty looking. And so he brought up this six-foot sign, the neighbor that, that she was pointing at. And, and I'm sure everybody in the township knows about it because all these columns about the enforcement. But they had a sign, six foot by six foot with three words on it. And the words were like, rhymed with duck, or what a female sheep is. And then the third word rhymes with ditch. And pointed at that lady. And we were just devastated. Can't have that. And it took until, and thankfully, the township got it straightened out. But now it's about three to four days. I think, I'm sorry, a week ago Wednesday, they got it straightened out. But this month, I'll have been a resident of Delta Township for fifty years. I'm a veteran. I play by the rules. We all play by the rules or try to. And this was, you, you guys have got to do something quicker because there was no language in there for obscene. They said, we can't do it because of obscene language. Uh, they have First Amendment rights. Well, actually, so the wife's husband went down because there was two guys that were living on there, come on that little bit. And so he went down and said, the township will take care of it. So please, you know, just do, get some language in them things with make these signs. Uh, First Amendment are not right. You can't use that. We have impressionable kids, eight, nine, ten years old, riding up down that street. And it wasn't like it was a house sign for sale. It was six foot by six foot. It's still laying there on the ground. But, you know, you guys, you know, I'm, I'm not leaving the township board, but you've got to put some more large, stronger language in here. I mean, I know they're covered by the First Amendment, but I thank you for your three minutes or maybe three minutes. Thank you.
Absolutely. You know, any sign that, that quite frankly shouldn't be in anybody's heart. So that's something we need to look at, regardless of what the message is to start with. But I agree with you. Something should not be, with something obscene enough, definitely.
There's got to be a timetable where, so like I said, you know, and my next door neighbor works for Homeland Security for Steve, please. Sure, check. From my mom, what's that sign? What's somebody pointing at? You know, I mean, how do you explain to a kid that the kid living there, the people in there are not kids, you know?
Yeah.
But, yeah, anyway, I thank you, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, we'll review, we'll review that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? See, and then we'll continue with the agenda. Then, uh, introduction of ordinances, verse one, number two, the introduction of the proposed amendment to chapter forty, utilities dealing with the water system in the Delta Township Code of Ordinance is what's the pleasure of the board? That's.
Supervisor, I move that Delta Township Board introduce amendments to chapter forty, sections forty to fifty-nine, forty-three sixty-one, forty-three sixty-four, forty-three ninety-five, the Delta Township Code of Ordinance. Township clerk is hereby directed to advertise this introduction in local newspapers with final consideration of the proposed ordinance amendment scheduled for September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Township Board meeting. Township clerk is hereby directed to advertise required thirty-day public comment notification.
Support.
Any discussion? And then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Motion carries. Item number three, the introduction of the proposed amendment to chapter forty, article, uh, four of the water, waste water system of the Delta Township Code of Ordinance.
I move that the Delta Township Board introduce amendments to chapter forty, sections forty-two thirty-four, forty-two sixty-five, forty-two sixty-six, forty-two sixty-eight, forty-two seventy-eight, forty-two eighty-four, forty-three eighty-eight, forty-three eighty-nine, and Delta Township Code of Ordinance says, township clerk is hereby directed to advertise this introduction in local newspapers with final consideration of the proposed ordinance amendment scheduled for the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Township Board meeting. Township clerk is also hereby directed to advertise the required thirty-day public comment notification.
Any support?
Support.
Any support? Any discussion? See, then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Motion carries. Uh, consent agenda this evening, uh, body, do you want to make a motion?
I do. I move the consent agenda with one change to it. I'd like to pull off number five, uh, the forty-eighth Lansing Monk New Year Festival proclamation. Doing that, I move the consent agenda.
Is there support?
Support.
It's support. And particularly, Paul Row, I've probably considered agenda and the mandates.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Treasurer Pitoa?
Yes.
Trustee Mojica?
Yes.
Trustee Casparra? Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
You did, President?
Yes.
Or clerk, the supervisor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And next, uh, we have up the resolution that was pulled from it. Um, I'll read the resolution, which you wanted to make a motion to approve. I do that. The resolution says, uh, the charter township of Delta, resolution of recognition of the forty-eighth annual Lansing Monk New Year Festival, whereas the Monk Family Association is celebrating the forty-eighth anniversary of the annual Lansing Monk New Year Festival on September, and whereas the festival, which celebrates the riches of the Monk community culture, has been held at Grandwoods Park in Delta Township for twenty years. And whereas the festival, which began in Vietnam and migrated to the United States, has founded, help, unite, and assist the Monk families residing within the tri-county region of Lansing with their adaption to American life through community service and local events. And whereas additionally, the festival helps to promote, preserve, and integrate Monk culture, traditions, and language to the Delta Township community and surrounding areas. Now therefore be it resolved that on the twelfth day of August, uh, two thousand twenty-four, the township board does hereby recognize and celebrate the forty-eighth anniversary of the Lansing Monk New Year's Festival and thank them for enriching our community through cultural diversity and. You have a motion, yes, is there support?
Support.
There is support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You sure?
I want to recognize some of the, uh, members here tonight. I believe we have President Liu, who is here, um, and Anne, who's sitting next to him. And we have Ty, did I get that right? Bree, and, and Tao. So I thank you for coming tonight, and again, congratulations on behalf of Delta Township.
We appreciate it all. Absolutely. We think it's wonderful that you choose to use Grandwoods Park, uh, for your celebration each year, and, uh, it's good to have you in the community. So we look forward to celebrating with you.
On the twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Get down the agenda now to new items of business. First one is the item number twelve, local recommendation for approval of the development district license for I Pot, uh, restaurant. Let's pleasure the board, and the owners aren't here today too. If anybody has any questions? Yeah, Sue, do you have any questions regarding that?
Because I'm actually their friend, and I'm, okay, I'm going to be, uh, their, uh, manager here. Yeah, she's the owner, and her husband is here. Um, he did actually all the planning and, yeah, maybe, so. And I helped them to, to do the paperwork. So do you have any questions, Boris?
I, uh, let's give it a introduce, and we'll see if everybody has it, which we'd like to make a motion.
Thank you much.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I move that the Delta Township Board, the resolutions recommending approval to the, um, Michigan Liquor Control Commission, the application from you, you, Trindag?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. For a, for a tavern development district license issued under MCL four-three-six-point-one-part-two-A, um, IB for autonomous consumption of alcohol beverages at the I Pot Restaurant, located at seven thirty Elmwood Road, Lansing, Michigan, four-nine-one-seven, provided that they meet all state guidelines for operation.
Yeah. So I have all of this.
I said the next.
Support it.
I, I'm done.
Yes, if you wanted to share. My guess is the board's probably ready to just approve it. I don't think they have any concerns.
We don't have any, maybe, we're concerned, we just want you, you know, to serve better to the, to the whole, uh, Delta Township, uh, community.
Yes.
Yes. Well, we want to provide isolation stories to you.
Well, we love, we love women-owned businesses in Delta, so. Yes.
I have another question too.
Okay, that's first and dependent. Well, the only tavern license I'm aware of here in Delta Township is, uh, Horrocks. So if this is the second one, uh, Brian, it's just the second one that you're aware of?
Is this under the tavern or just under the redevelopment development?
It's under, it's a development district license, but it's a tax style license.
So, so, still, this is my question, so it's still the free drink minimum or maximum? I guess it's analogous. Thank you, you've answered my question.
And basically, we need to say yes.
So I just want to make sure, is this is like ZapDome and the venue?
It is, this is the exact same process as ZapDome and the venue. They qualify at the same criteria, being in the CIA. There's still the same investment, um, standard. So it's seventy-five K in the business, and then two hundred thousand in the corridor, and we're over, we're in the millions in corridor investment. So, um, but in the process from here, just to summarize it, so that the applicants know as well, this is a recommendation that goes to Michigan Liquor Control Commission. They basically will take the resolution, the specifically formatted document that we'll need. And then, um, our assessor Ted will sign a document, and they'll take all of that stuff and then send it to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for review. They do their, all their myriad of inspections and verifications and all that. So this is just the, kind of the first step in their, a longer process.
By the way, um, the owner here, she's from, okay, we, okay, she's actually from, uh, uh, Vietnam.
From Vietnam, okay.
And she actually has another business, restaurant business, and she could, she has, uh, liquor license for that one, uh, for that restaurant. It's called Omi Sushi, and she kept good record for the, for, yeah, for the, for the liquor license for about four years, right? Four, five years.
Where is that one located? Is that in Delta Township?
East Lansing.
East Lansing, very good. Well, welcome to Delta Township.
So, yeah, she will.
Even tell Delta Township. But the Omi is over East Lansing.
Yeah, so she will keep good record as well.
I have a classic.
With new business.
I don't think we have any concerns.
We're most excited to have.
Thank you.
Anybody take your?
Any other comments or questions for the board? If not, then all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Motion carries.
And I'll be in touch with all of you after, after tomorrow.
Thank you. Sure, sure.
Thank you.
For going. Next up, item thirteen, the wind trace number four, final plat, pleasure to board on that one.
I move that the Delta Township Board grant approval for the final plat of wind trace number four, a subdivision consisting of nineteen single-family lots, lots sixty through seventy-eight, as depicted on the final plat map prepared by Pets Inc., dated July tenth, twenty twenty-four, and authorizes the township clerk to sign a final plat. Approval of the final plat is subject to the proprietor obtaining the requisite signatures from the Eaton County Treasurer, Eaton County Drink Commissioner, Eaton County Road Commissioner, and the Eaton County Plate Board.
There's support.
Support.
There is support. Any discussion? We do have representatives here, there's questions.
Yeah, a question, um, you know, I see that we've done more suspensions on the various phases. And that's understandable, given the changes of the, uh, the market and then the COVID and all that sort of thing. Uh, but my question is, if this comes to fruition and completion, does that conclude our, um, agreement? Our consent agreement?
What you mean?
Then we have a consent agreement with them?
This is a different property.
This is for a different property? Okay, so it's not under the jurisdiction of the consent agreement? Right. Okay, are there any more, um, interclass involved in this property?
Yes.
Can you tell me?
We're about halfway through this.
Okay.
That's, uh, seventy-eight.
All right. And what about the three, the other, the, the property that is under the consent?
We're trying to get approval for that, as we speak.
Okay.
Um, we got construction plans in for review and approval. Uh, so we're getting close to construction there for the first phase of that. And, uh, we're, we're hoping to get that started again this year.
And how many phases would that be?
Don't know.
Don't know yet.
Yeah, there's, the first phase is. Hundred plus units in the first phase of that development.
And about how much of a percentage of that property would that take off?
Uh, a little less than fifty percent.
Okay, it's still a substantial amount, right? Yeah. Okay, and I clarify it for you, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Both aye. Oh, we had one. You said that your approvals requisite platform approval, that always comes later.
Right, it's just that, that we can, the ultimate approval is dependent on that, right? Just like.
So I think you got half of the, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, item number fourteen, board and commissioner appointments. We have a few here, they all said they're coming today, but I don't think they're, they are here. Um, for the zoning bar of appeals, Kathy Telbit has been appointed to fill an expiring, expiring term. And then Peter Skiles, who was recommended by Dave Arkin, our current chair, for to be the new alternate position for that board. And then for Economic Development Corporation, Sun Sanchari, Morgan McIntyre, and then Jeremy Clayborne. So I would move the aforementioned persons be appointed to the Delta Township Board's commissions and that the clerk is hereby directed to send notifications to all of those selected, informing them of their appointment. Is there a support?
Support.
There is support. Is there any discussion yet, Dennis?
Yeah, it's a question, uh, just, there's, uh, the Economic Development Corporation has partial two six-year terms there, you know, who, who is left?
There's one more vacancy, I can't remember who left, who they're replacing. Peter, do you know off the top of your head?
I think, oh, I'm looking, player talking, maybe I'll find it.
Okay. And just curious, you know, they used to, I don't know if they still do, how often do they meet the Economic Development Corporation?
They've met once since I've been on staff, so in the last year and a half. So, well, the, the old, we, we would have to meet more frequently, uh, just hasn't worked around there right now.
Yeah, I was just curious, I was just curious, because it used to be about once a quarter.
I think if I get to speak to that, we, you know, some challenges in terms of turnover with our economic development, uh, position, but also we did have a couple other meetings. We didn't get a quorum there, so I think refilling some of these positions at least get into somewhat regularly. Um, and they, they do serve as the brownfield redevelopment board as well, which we have not had any brownfield, uh, activities since the project across the street, but, uh, right, getting, getting some more active members will be helpful.
Thank you.
And if I may, we have one more vacancy. With the appointment of these two people, this will be one vacancy.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those, yeah, go ahead, thanks.
Um, I just wanted to take this moment since we're talking about appointments to committees, uh, to suggest that we take up at a future committee of the whole, uh, a discussion about revising our nominating process. Uh, because often the people who are, uh, nominated, majority of the board does not get a chance to meet them before we vote on them. And, uh, you, you stated there are some that are, are not here this evening. Uh, and also voting on the candidates as a slate. Uh, I feel it does not, uh, adequately speak to their unique qualifications for each position. And so, uh, as I have no objections to these qualified candidates, I read through your applications and, and thank you so much for your service, those of you who are here. Uh, I will, I will vote to confirm, but I would like us to revisit our process in the future. That's all. Thank you.
Another question.
Just, are there any here in the room? Just wanted to see if they were.
Yeah, I don't think they were all.
How are you?
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm a senior. I'm excited to serve my community in any way possible and it's a good fit for me. Um, I look forward to working with everyone in the, in the community to do the best we can for Delta Township and helping grow. Be an amazing plate. I'm really going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we definitely are pleased and thrilled that you're willing to serve and interested. So great to have you. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I, I was opposed, same thing. Motion carries. Minutes report, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. Uh, apologize for the cramped room tonight. So I'll set the meeting schedule and had a regular meeting, uh, you know, back in last year, uh, just had more people here than I, than I thought, but we do have some other meeting space we can use if we need to. For our flip flop rooms, we'll try to be wary of that in the future. Um, I just wanted to congratulate all the board members on, uh, on their primary, uh, elections and, uh, just, uh, commend the clerk and all of her staff and, and all of our township. Um, staff who volunteered and all our election workers. Um, it's just an extraordinary amount of effort and every year more and more impressed with how much, um, uh, work a lot of our volunteers or, you know, paid volunteers have to do. Uh, so very, um, very excited that we have new people coming on and, uh, but it is a, an extraordinary effort to pull up an election, so. And just a practice for November, which will be even, uh, more intense. Uh, you may have noticed, we do have our, uh, fire chief posting live, um, out there, um, to fill that position. Um, also related to that, uh, I'm going to submit a letter of support. Um, some of the regional fire departments are applying for, or area fire departments are applying for a regional grant to replace optcomes um, across the region. Uh, so there would be some matching cost to that. Uh, but I figured it was, uh, reasonable and, and a lot of our optcomes are toward the end of their life cycle. Um, so those are the, uh, signals that, you know, change the light automatically for, um, emergency vehicles, uh, ambulances or police vehicles, that type of thing. So, uh, just to put that on your radar, uh, since that came across my desk this week. Um, uh, can, uh, or like to just, uh, recognize the sheriff's office and our parks department for a very nice, uh, national night out. So we had a good crowd despite the rain early in the day, um, but, uh, really nice event. I'm, I'm proud that they're kind of combining efforts on that, uh, on that front and having touch a truck and different things there as well. So brought out a good crowd. Um, couple important road closures, uh, Creites going north at Saint Joe is closed until August twenty first while we tie in the, uh, water main there. So that will, um, and then complete, uh, making that line from the, uh, from that side of the project. Um, so, uh, racing to get that done before school starts.
And you feel bad for that gas station in McDonald's right there. Their garage door was locked off for a while. Now you can't go down, you know, it's going to impact their business, obviously.
So it's just, it's just north? So east, west is open?
Correct. Saint Joe on east and west, yeah. South, yeah. Yeah, it is unfortunate. Also, it's, it's becoming a cut through as well. Um, so, uh, it is unfortunate, but, but it is, uh, on the, on the bright side, we'll have that infrastructure replaced and, uh, um, so trying to do that as quickly as possible. Um, same with, uh, the Willow closure. Um, unfortunately have run in, the contractor has run into some problems, CCC. And that's going to be delayed probably till, uh, August thirty first. They just, uh, uh, committed to today. So that's a contractor issue that we're, um, trying to work towards. If there's any other questions on that, I can have Rick speak to that. But, uh, then again, as we're pushing as quickly as possible, um, that's a, um, that's an important piece of the wharf, uh, plant that connect to Carrier Creek in there. Um, we did have our meeting for the CIP, uh, with the planning commission, um, representatives, so that will be coming to the board here soon as well. But that's all I have. Mr. Supervisor, but I have to answer any other questions?
Brian, um, who's the lead agency on the grant for optcomes? Which departments?
Party in township.
Right here.
Lan- Lansing was leading that a couple of years ago and now it's kind of transferred over to British Township, but um, it had a couple tries at it. Have been unsuccessful, but keep trying.
Is it federal? Who's the funding, who's the grant?
There is four or five different funding sources that they are trying to go after. Um, so this, this program that they're looking at is a federal program, Safe Streets for All. So there are some additional ones that they're, uh, looking for, but this is the most, uh, recent.
You know, do you have a rough idea of the cost they're asking for?
Total for the region is roughly four or five million dollars. Um, for Delta, your, uh, all of our intersections, it's not, it's it's both the intersections and then also the bicycles and the vehicle or apparatus would be roughly eighteen or so. Um, it's, uh, we're, we're probably at eight or nine hundred thousand. Twenty percent match. Hundred to a hundred and fifty, bring.
Okay.
Other questions for? Sinem, okay, great. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate your report. The final thing from the board before we kick further on public comment.
I have a question for our officer. I have noticed lately a lot of people jaywalking across that, you know, highway. And I was wondering if there's been an uptick in accidents, people being hurt or anything like that.
No, we don't add any vehicles. That's the most of them.
Okay, it, every time I see it's very, very scary. It's right, right over there and okay, all right, just wanted to check. So thank you.
Any more comments? Any final public comments? See?